We're ready to go and just wanted to welcome everybody to our work session this evening. First on our agenda, Mr. Jenny Wood. How are you doing, Jenny?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Good.
So I just wanted to propose a calendar change to you guys tonight. Right now, we have a remote learning optional workday scheduled on October 15th, which is a Friday. And it is also the Testola Pisga football game. So in our proposal, we would like to make that Friday a regular school day and move the remote learning optional workday to Tuesday, October 19th. So kids and staff will all be on campus on the Friday of the game.
Got to get the pep rallies in.
When we made this calendar, we didn't know.
What the schedule was.
Our school said, "Maybe we might have added schedules." And we've made calendar changes, I think, for worse reasons. Like internet breaks and that kind of stuff.
One more thing, you may get this question, but in the original calendar, the fall break was split into two weeks. So there was a Friday on one week and a Monday on the second week. And the reason we did that was when we developed this calendar, you probably remember, Mr. Francis, that our middle and high school students were on Week A and Week B. And so we wanted each to take one from each week. And but now, since we're all back to a normal schedule, I don't think it'll matter. And the proposed is the same fall break as the early college.
So Jenny can answer any questions, but if there's no objection, we'll bring that on Monday.
Which week is that fall break?
Is that November?
Well, now, on the proposed, it will be October 18th and 19th.
Monday and Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay, so that's who we meet.
I got you.
Okay, so I see what you're doing there.
Instead of Friday, Monday, it'll be Monday and Tuesday.
I see.
With your approval.
Any questions? All right. Yeah, just bring it for board action on Monday, it'll be fine.
Thank you, Jenny. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the next thing we have is our first, what we had talked about doing quarterly report on ESER or COVID-19 relief federal funding expenditures. You have that there in front of you, and I have a copy somewhere. And I have the trustee, the trustee federal programs person behind me, who can let me borrow her copy, even though she's given me about three. So these are our federal funds. They may only be used on expenditures caused directly by COVID-19. You can, in some instances, go back and pay for something that you paid for with local funds earlier. There's not a ton of that going on, but some of that is going on. You can certainly do it in the present. For example, we paid for summer school with these funds while summer school was going on. And in a few instances, if it's approved by the federal programs people in Raleigh, we can do some preventative things. One of the things that we know we will be able to do in the future is pay for some of our HVAC upgrades. So we have better air circulation and overall air quality. So let's start with ESER 2 on the left. It actually came after ESER 1, but it's on the left. And I think probably the easiest to describe. Lisa knows a lot more about this, so she may have to help me. She's got, she's got my back, literally, here in the meeting. So these are funds that we spent during summer school. Now, not these, this is not the total cost of summer school, okay? But these are funds that we spent during June and July. Summer school ended today, so we had some expenses through today. And then you'll remember that the state legislature required us to pay a national board bonus for people who are nationally board certified if they agreed to work the length of contract that we will do. And we will pay that probably at the end of this month, after we see that everybody worked the days that they committed to work. And there may be a few expenditures that we're unaware of. So I guess, not completely technical, but to date, on summer school, we spent $635,495.16. That will be higher, and we knew it would cost a lot. And we talked about that when we were doing the planning. So you can see supplies and materials there, $2,600, almost $2,700 bucks. The teacher, there weren't really salary, salaries, but the hourly pay, $372,000 plus cafeteria workers, nearly $21,000. Teacher assistants, little, just a little over $20,000. Bus drivers, $31,000, a little over $31,000. Directors, almost $89,000. Clerical, this was some bonus money. You remember, we talked about the bonus for the 12-month clerical. $2,700, a little over $2,700. Indirect cost, some of you who in your business may be familiar with indirect costs. That is a cost that you can charge to a grant or expenses that are there but are unseen in the grant. Things like having the lights on and making sure the telephones are working and the HVAC runs and all those kinds of things. So that's an indirect cost that we charged to the grant, which will save us having to pay for those kinds of costs out of local funds. Over $40,000, almost $41,000 in benefits. The software that we used mainly to communicate with parents, remind and other things, and so $635,000. So are there questions about ESER 2? ESER 2 Lisa will bring on Monday. You have to resubmit your plans each year. So she'll bring the new plan, and that will be on the board agenda for Monday. Any questions with ESER 2? Okay, ESER 1, now you all probably will remember me telling you that we liked ESER 2 better than ESER 1 because ESER 1 had, had this 163 line, and then it had a bunch of other lines that were very specific to like EC and things like that. But out of ESER 1, we've spent nearly a half million dollars, $488,000. We spent $175,000 on technology. That was to replace Chromebooks that were damaged or lost and to have more Chromebooks when we started distributing them two marches ago. We were able to recoup some of the money that we paid to start the employee assistance program, and that has gone well. And Mr. Hines will provide a report on Monday night about that. We had some tutoring that we did to help students with learning loss. During the year, mainly middle school and high school students, we were able to recoup a couple thousand dollars there. Again, there's some indirect cost in the next line. Over $15,000 in all the cleaning supplies that we purchased and bought. And then over $10,000 in maintenance supplies and repairs. And that is everything from bottle refill stations so students aren't drinking directly out of the water faucets to Plexiglas barriers. So a lot of things that maintenance, maintenance actually put together for us or purchased and installed. The next line is athletic solvency, and I want to give a little bit of a warning. We have submitted that, and we have had people tell us that they think that that will fly, but it has yet to be approved, okay? So you all had made a commitment to make sure our athletic teams did not go under. And we may get really lucky and be able to cover that with ESER 1 funds. That is not a done deal, okay? But that's there. And then we, there's a private school equity amount where we are required to share these funds with private schools. We're glad to do that for them. Of $17,000, almost $17,500, we have done that distribution. Transportation is the actual, not paying the drivers, but running the buses, the gas, the oil, the fuel, the, all those kinds of things that we did. And then we had a remote learning stipend. You will remember, this is something that we agreed to pay out of school remediation funds because we did have a few teachers who were not only teaching students in front of them and went on their off week, but they were also on their planning times picking up a remote section of whatever chemistry or whatever the remote section was. And we think that one is going to fly. How am I doing?
You're doing great.
Okay, so, so now I'm gonna let you ask the hard questions to Lisa. But, and then, as I said, she will bring on Monday revised plans for the next year that we're required to submit.
Brooke is actually gonna attach those this evening, so you'll have them to review.
Yeah, well, they usually don't, that usually doesn't go out till about Thursday, anyway. Yeah. So any questions? Worried about what has been spent thus far? It's tighter than you think. Lisa and I talked earlier today that about every time she goes to a meeting, they seem to get tighter because they, they, part of the, and I'm stealing all of this from her, she gets all the credit for the stuff I'm saying accurately, but all of the titles, Title 1, Learning Assistance, Title 2, Employee Training, Title 4, some of the stuff we've done with our high schools, with therapeutic services and other things. All the titles have to be related in somehow to instruction and not extracurricular activity. We think that's part of the pause on our athletic solvency. They're, they're thinking about all the other titles, and this is not one of those titles. This really is, did you have to spend money? Or was there an expenditure caused by COVID? And so I'll pause, I talk too much as it is, and let you all ask questions. We'll try to answer them.
I know that this year's summer school was expanded and everything else, but normally what would we spend on that?
You remember the, you remember the, we get a budget from the state for that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you a ballpark of what we had planned before we got ESER money. Mr. Henson, we had planned another grant that we had received to spend probably $60,000 this summer. And that was just gonna be very, very limited in scope, though. Now, on top of that, you gotta understand, we get, we got money for RTA, which is a whole separate pot of money, read to achieve, which is for our kindergarten through second grade. That's a whole different, so when you add those two together, I, I just wanna say, what, a couple hundred thousand?
Yeah, maybe close to three, between 200 and 300 thousand.
That was no high school at all. And again, we were only planning that to do, to expand that to math, just some math in elementary and some math remediation, very small scale, in sixth and seventh grade. Of course, we never did that. And that, we've not in the past offered summer school to that extent for secondary at all, just the required read to achieve from the state for our earliest, our youngest elementary students.
And this number will be higher because we still have learning that occurred this week, and we still have the national board.
And how many students did we end up?
We registered over 900. We did a first day count and a fifth day count, which was 700 and then 500. And we had hundreds most days until the very end, and then it, it started slipping.
What kind of feedback have we had from the teachers on whether they felt like it was successful and how they feel like that went this?
Yeah, I was, I was talking to Ann Trader today. She's been one of our directors at Hazelwood. And they did, they were required to do for our elementary and middle school an eye-ready assessment, a beginning and a post-assessment. So we're waiting to get those results to see what the data says. I think what she said today, I think it's probably pretty consistent throughout. What most people would say is the students that came consistently, they saw a big gain from that. And people couldn't, I mean, people had vacations and job responsibilities and things like that, but a lot of our kids came consistently. We recovered, and I just don't wanna throw out a number here. I'll look and see, I had this earlier. But the amount of credits we recovered at our high school was really impressive. So we did recover, and again, I don't wanna throw out an arbitrary number here, but at one time, this was probably three or four weeks ago, we had probably recovered over 250 credits at that point, okay? So it's, that number will be even higher now for our high school students. So hopefully, that will get them back on track for graduation for several of them. It was just, you know, very, very expansive. It encompassed everybody that wanted to come. And I think, I think when you walk through those buildings, every time I walked through and I saw kids there, I thought, this is a good thing. They were really doing instruction with those kids. They had a lot of fun things with them. And one of the best things I heard about it is at 12:30 when they were leaving, they would be on the car lot saying, "I'm gonna go to grandma's house and play. I'm gonna go to the pool." They still had time to play and do things in the afternoon. We had a lot of counties tell us they thought that was a good idea. It wasn't all day long, just for 30 days.
We are planning on doing that next summer as well.
This one, you know, was required. We didn't get to do exactly how we wanted, you know, we had to follow the letter of that law. So I'm excited about next year if we can make it our own because I think we've really seen the potential of what we could do. And again, we were planning on doing something smaller in scale, but there will be money as long as Dr. Nolte, you know, that money will be there for summer school next year.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's up to me. Part of the ESER funds are specifically designated for learning loss. There's a percentage, what's?
20% in ESER 3.
20?
And there's also going to be an additional amount of funds that will, will be, we will be able to apply for, that will be for summer again. So we, we, our summer, our summer endeavors will be well-supported in the next few years.
Good. The only other question I had for you all was, do you want me to continue doing this in a work session? Or do you want me to do it with finance? We talked about doing it like three times a year, you know, sort of quarterly.
It's either a work session or finance.
This was perfect.
Okay. All right, very good.
The Monday nights are usually pretty crowded.
No, we don't wanna do it on, we don't wanna do it then. That's why we have.
Monday nights are pretty crowded.
I think we have work sessions for stuff like this. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, it's all, it, it's mainly me tonight with a little help from Lisa and Jenny. Dr. Putnam's taking his last little break, but he'll be back on Monday. So one of the things that we had mentioned to you all, but it was not very formalized, and we felt like it would be good to just talk about tonight in a work session, was bus driver recruitment and retention, okay? So the Principal's Association officers, there were four of them, and several of us from the central office have been working on a recruitment and retention plan, especially for bus drivers. There is a shortage of bus drivers nationwide, okay? You, if you've traveled, like I have some, you see buses parked on the side of the road with signs on them, "Come drive a bus," and a phone number, that kind of stuff. We really, you all know that we really like to sink our teeth into stuff and go after stuff. And so we don't know if we can solve this problem when it's a nationwide problem. But we would really like to be, you know, the first or one of the first school systems that figures out a way to at least mitigate the problem pretty significantly. And so we have a number of ideas. Some of those would require your approval if they were related to pay. And we have a meeting Monday afternoon at about 1:30 to refine some of our thoughts on that so we can bring you some, some stuff on Monday. And of course, if it relates to pay, it would be part of personnel. But anyway, we've done a lot of things. I think history's important. So we've done a lot of things in the last three years, not only for bus drivers, but other people because we know our people really are the valuable resource. We could not have done what we've done, especially during COVID, without them. But early on, even back when I was in interim, I worked with you all, and we put everyone back on the pay steps, and that was a good thing. So they get an annual pay raise. We've worked really hard, again with your approval, to increase the number of dual employees who also drive a bus. That is good for them. They have essentially a full-time job or very close to it. They get health benefits from the, from state money rather than local money. And it, it's very good for a lot of them. And you have, you know, one person doing a couple jobs, and that's worked pretty well. We then doubled the local supplement from 2%, 4%, not only for bus drivers but other people. We should have done that. And then we took some money and actually increased the hourly rate for bus drivers a little bit a couple years ago. One of the things that you all have done that we're not, we don't think anyone else in the state has done, and I credit Pat and Dean Shatley and Jason Hines for doing all this background research. And you provide health insurance for folks who drive at least 20 hours. We can't provide it if they drive less than that. But if they drive over 20, we can pay for it. If it's over 30, the state, it's part of the state package. And then we were very cognizant of our employees and student learning during COVID. You all know that. We did as much as we could for both groups. And so that very first summer, you all know that we distributed over 3/4 of a million meals, and that allowed a lot of our drivers who might not otherwise have employment to work that first summer. And we are thankful that they did that, very, very thankful that they did that. And we gave them a little bit of an increased rate that first summer. It was, it was a little bit more, and we appreciate that. And then the other thing that we talked about, and I don't want to pretend that this was about our classified employees because we really were thinking about students. But when we opened school last fall, at the end of September for middle and high and elementary, the first part of October, we went five days a week. And we did that for students, but it also allowed our bus drivers to drive five days a week if they wanted to. So we've done a lot. That has not fixed the problem. Like I said, it's, it's a nationwide problem. So here's some of the things that we're working on. We want to improve advertising, recruitment, and training. We don't know how much bang we'll get for that buck, but, but, buck. But we do know that it's pretty difficult to find someone who's willing to drive, give them the paper classroom coursework, have them do the road driving, and get them a license in hand and get them on a bus. You just can't do that in a week. The training sessions are spread out for us a couple times a year. Sometimes you can squeeze someone into a training in Buncombe County or, or, you know, over in Bryson City or somewhere, Shelby or Charlotte or someone like that. So one of the things that we would like to consider is possibly hiring someone part-time, and that's what they do. They help us find people, they get them in a class. They, they find out where the class is, they get them scheduled, they get them back here, they get them with a driver, and they get them back to us pretty quickly because typically, when we find someone who's interested, by the time we can get them licensed and trained, they've taken another job. We think that would cost under $30,000 a year, and we don't think that that's something we would have to do permanently. That would obviously be something that works, would work in the, work out of the transportation department with Mr. Sharp. The other thing that is pretty new on our radar is Mr. Sharp has been talking to the people in Raleigh, and we believe that we can find online coursework. We may have to huddle them up in a room here and be with them, but we could schedule that a little differently, and that could be quicker. And then we would just have to worry about the driving part. One of the other things that I think has allowed us to run the buses as often as we have been able to is we have some pretty fateful subs that really never want a full-time route, but they are fateful, you know, they'll sub for five years. And so we've talked about, with your permission, of possibly creating a sub-scale, a scale that is more like the regular driver scale. And so instead of them giving $12.15 or whatever that sub rate is for five years, that if they've really been a sub, and they've subbed so many days a year, that if the second year, they'd get a little more, and we would have a scale for subs. That's an out-of-the-box thought, but we think that's practical. We also think that money does help. It doesn't help completely. We were able to offer $20 an hour this summer and still didn't get a lot. But we do know that people don't wanna drive for free. And so right now, we're still having this debate about, is that a little something for all types of drivers? Or do we do something like we've done in athletics, which is focus on people who are there at the school, working full-time anyway? They seem, in general, to be, to stay with us longer. And I'm saying in general because we have some people who only drive a bus, and they have been fantastic for a long time. So that's what our meeting on Monday is about, to try to figure out what kind of pay increase to suggest to the board. Is it a little something for everyone? Or do we focus on people who we know will be on campus all day long, and it will be a little more likely that they'll be there when the buses need to roll? So that is a snapshot. We're brainstorming some other things. I had a meeting this afternoon with Jenny Wood. And you know, she talks to a lot of benefactors, and, and they do things for us that a lot of other school systems don't have through the foundation. And she threw an idea or two at me that she got from a benefactor. But what I'd like to do is sort of sift that through the admin folks early next week before we throw out something that might be a great idea or might be really dumb. So, so I think the things that would come to you, obviously, would be the part-time person and the pay raise. And so I just wanted to share all that with you and then see if you wanted to talk about it or ask questions. It is a nationwide problem, but we do, we don't want that to be an excuse. We'd like for that to be a challenge for us.
Got one question about, it's not as much about pay scale, but I'm trying to remember in the past now because you have to have your medical card updated every two years as well. And there, for a while, I think we were paying for that, but then somehow we didn't pay for the medical card examination. And that might be just another little quirk that might help them if we can pay for that medical examination. I know now that the, and I know a lot of our bus drivers now, they do go to the chiropractor center up here in Waynesville, which it was, if you went to the.
Family Circle.
Yeah, right there at Family Circle. They've, that's where I had my medical card up there as well. And the pricing. as well. And the pricing they gave our school system employees, and plus, just like me and an individual coming in there, was much better. The state was, you know, most places you go to, doctor's offices, urgent care, a place like that, they're 140, 150 bucks for that exam. He was charged like 90 bucks a piece.
I know. I dropped my bus license about four years ago, and that was one of the factors. The other was that I was not sitting at a school every day where I, you know, could drive, but still, I wrote that down.
I think we are now again, but I couldn't remember what that was.
I tell you what I remember, is that there were some individual principals who would look at someone and say, I'll use some of my school money to pay for that, if you'll go get it and bring me the receipt. But I'm not sure we did it universally. I personally think that's a pretty good idea. I have no idea what that cost would be, but we would certainly calculate that before we brought it back to you.
I just, I think it's good that y'all are proactively looking for solutions instead of just bringing us problems, because I was listening to a story the other day, and Buncombe County's having the same problem, and, oh yeah, looking for all that. And so I think it's, I think it would be good if we could make it a little bit easier to recruit and create a better environment, a better situation all the way around. And I don't know exactly what that looks like, but I think you've got the right group, because those principals have to live it and breathe it every day, or drive it, whatever. So I'm glad it's happening anyway.
Yeah, we've invited the president of the Principals Association to meet with us on Monday.
Yeah, I like, I like a lot of the ideas you've thrown out, too. That's.
Well, there are two of them that would, maybe, maybe the subscale thing, too, that would be something.
I like that idea.
So three of them, around, you know, a few of them that we would need to bring to you, and that would need to be your approval item.
I think anything we can do, I mean, I searched high and low for a driver at my business as well, and I mean, it's, to find a good driver is, the gods and the stars and everything else has to line up, I think. But I think if you put things in your favorites, it's going to help. And amazingly, what happened with mine is just a sign, just advertising, just stuck up out in the yard.
I will tell you a story that Brooke, Brooke told me today, so, or yesterday, I can't remember when it was. So she was calling Stephen Sharp, you know, to check his schedule so he could meet with us on Monday. And as part of the conversation with her, he said to her, you know that music that plays when we call you and we put you on hold? And we advertise for bus drivers on that. So it just tells you he's thinking, you know? That was the online learning. I mean, so, you know, we'll consider about anything, you know? We certainly can't do everything that comes forward and that we think about, but we're not opposed to considering and thinking about anything that might be practical.
Dr. Bill, one thing I forgot to do at the beginning of the meeting was to let everybody know where board members were. Mr. Nesbit is out of town. Mr. Kirkpatrick is joining us remotely. Ronnie Clark is still in the hospital, so continue to pray for him. I did speak with him earlier this afternoon, and he seems to be doing pretty well. He said that he would call in, but there was a lot of traffic in and out of his room, so the confidentiality in some of the topics might not be, and he's medicated. And I appreciate the fact that he admitted that. He says, I'm medicated, I may not make a good decision. So I said, I advise you not to vote either, but I said, the only thing we're going to do is the work session, so.
And along those same lines, Mr. Francis, I mentioned, when some of you were coming in, that Mr. Smathers called in and checked the agenda tonight, but he's with his family.
Sure.
And Dr. Putnam's vacated.
And we want to remember, I'm a Jean, Jimmy's wife, she's struggling, and Jimmy, we pray for you and her. And I know you've spent a huge amount of time with her, which is impressive. I know you, you're a good person, I know you was going to do it anyway. So let her know that we're pulling for her, okay?
I will. Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks for all the prayers and support, too.
I should have done that to start with, but anyway, never, never too late to do something like that.
It's a work session.
Correct.
So, members of the board, I think the next item is just an update on state COVID rules, and the update. I will not attempt to steal any of Dr. Putnam's under. He will provide a procedural update on Monday night at the board meeting. And like I mentioned to you, with the policy adjustment that's pending, he will spend some time with all staff on the 12th, talking about some procedural things. But there are, you know, probably several things I can share, and you all may want to discuss. So as of today, none of the rules from the governor or Health and Human Services have really changed. There have been a couple press conferences since the 21st. I have listened, I listened to the first one, and I listened to the second half of the second one, but other people were listening to the whole second one. And so none of those rules have changed since the 21st. Other school systems in the region are making the same kinds of decisions that we are making about masking and other things related to that. And, you know, thus far, most of them have picked optional in the region. I had a regional superintendent's meeting in Asheville this morning, and as you can imagine, we had lots of really fun things to talk about. But so, nothing has really changed in terms of state rules. We've had a couple conversations with Dr. Jaben, and we are planning a meeting, when I say we, Dr. Putnam and I, are planning a meeting with Dr. Jaben and Mrs. Henderson to talk about measures that we would use administratively when we're making decisions about school schedules and things like that. Now, we did that last year, and I think the stuff that we used last year worked really well, but it is a new year, and we have a, we have a new increase in, you know, some things are better, and some things may not be, if you look at, you know, vaccination availability and other things. So what we used last year was uncontrolled spread of the virus on campus. And I can remember Dr. Putnam and I, nights and weekends, talking to Patrick, the former public health director, or Dr. Jaben, and they would call us, or we would call them when we knew about a case. And I can remember being at home one night going, what are we going to do if we get a cluster, you know? What are we going to do if we get a cluster? What are we going to do? And I got on the phone with Dr. Jaben, and he said, well, that's not good, but we really need to worry about spread that we can't stop with isolations or quarantines. And so we adopted at that time, it was early in the fall, it was around October, when we were first coming back in person. So one of our measures last year was uncontrolled spread, and we only had about a dozen or less confirmed cases. Most of those were employees early on in October, and then a student or two at the end of the year. And then the other measure that you all, I'm sure, will remember very well, when we hit that winter surge, and we went into the Christmas holidays, New Years, we were really concerned about staffing. And with your permission, we actually extended our break there for three more days to make sure we could get back and check our numbers and make sure we would staff. So those are two that I feel really good about, and will be suggesting that we use. And then, you know, we'll just have a good meeting. Dr. Jaben, we've worked with him a long time. He's been very helpful in managing the day-to-day kind of stuff. And so we have that meeting scheduled on Monday. We didn't have to do a whole lot, closed a couple classes last year, and then we had lots of individuals who had to be isolated or quarantined, mainly because they were a close contact of someone in their home, or they went to a New Year's Eve party, or a birthday party, or something like that, not at school. We also met with principals late in July, at this point, Brooke, I can't remember the dates, the 26th and 27th, or 27th and 28th. Dr. Putnam covered a lot of procedures with them. And then, you know, we have people who are calling us, obviously, as school gets starts. We always get additional calls. And we're talking to those folks and trying to give them updates. The only thing I think that's really unknown, and we're checking on this, Pat's checking on it, and everything else, is masking related to buses. We have double and triple-checked pre-K and childcare. And everyone tells us that's our decision as per the toolkit changes, and we haven't gotten a consensus on the bus thing, but if it is different than what we have decided here, we'll get with you quickly on that. So, any, I mean, that's a pretty broad, general update. Dr. Putnam will be a little more technical with some of his things that he does on Monday.
Dr. Bill, I've talked to you about this. Dr. Jaben did reach out to me and asked me if the board wanted to meet, and I said, you know, that's our administration's position. I mean, that's their job. And does anybody from the board feel different than that? I felt like that last year, the administration was on top of things. They are the ones that's got the year of experience, year and a half of experience with this. And quite honestly, I'm, I don't feel qualified to even, I mean, we can talk about it, but I think that the day-to-day operations is our administration, as it relates to all school matters, not just the masks, the COVID-19 spread, the possible thread or whatever. So, you might have any different opinion on that?
No, I'm in agreement with you, Mr. Chairman.
I agree with you, that we, they, they're doing a good job. Need to continue to let them do their job, and just give them the support that they need and ask for.
We're glad to do it. That's what you pass to do, whether it's, you know, fire alarms, or snow, or COVID, or heaven forbid, another ransomware attack, you know, whatever it is, internet service, that's, that's what we do, and we're glad, we're glad to jump on it with our, with our partners, whoever they are, you know? With COVID, it's certainly public health, but, you know, sometimes it's law enforcement or other folks, but we're glad to do that. And certainly, when it calls for your action, we let you know in a hurry, and you all have been really good to meet, almost over-meet during COVID. And so we're glad to manage it.
I appreciate the quick response, and the information flow that we get through our text, our group text. It goes fast. I was coming by test call the other day, I said, I wonder what happened here, and I looked down, there's a text. Dr. Bill says a student got hit after somebody ran a red light. I said, well, there's the answers. Carry on. And I appreciate that, because, I mean, it's timely, because people call you up sometimes and ask, what's going on? You know, and I appreciate it.
Glad to do it. Board, the only other thing that I have in open session, I do want some time in closed session to review some personnel matters. I don't think it'll require any of your action, but we have so much going on that Brooke and I thought it might be really good if you all look at the agenda, make sure we haven't missed anything, and we may have even suggested in addition, did you put that last thing on this afternoon? Lisa presenting the budget stuff. I know it's unusual for us to ask you to look at that, but.
I think it's good.
Just busy.
Yeah, I like to see it.
Yeah, and we may be able to do that in future work sessions, but we just, we're glad to do what we do, but man, it's, it's, it's fun right now. There's a lot going on.
We did have a formal request for, from the Farm Bureau to come. Don Smart wanted to speak, and I felt like that, you know, I just advised them to come during the open comments section, public comments, since it really doesn't need to be an agenda item. And if the board feels led to do so, we can extend the three-minute deal, or we can put it on the agenda. What do y'all think? Just leave it like it is, or?
Yes, how much time does it need?
I don't think it needs a lot of time, but.
You know Don, and you'd start.
If you don't.
You better not intend to hide him if you think he's going to run over, because we don't want him.
Right.
We don't want to set a precedent.
Brooks, if you would, just go ahead and change the, add Mr. Don Smart, Haywood County Farm Bureau, just information only.
That's all we have, board, unless you all have other things you want to talk about in the work session before I do the personnel updates.
Can't think of anything else. I need a motion.
Enjoyed your summer break.
Madeline and I did get one week away, but the rest of it, we've been happy to be at work.
Need a motion to go into closed session?
I'll move.
Mr. Burnett's made a motion, seconded by.
I'll second.
Mr. Francis, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? Being number one, vote always a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Good job, Mr. Kirkpatrick. Motion carries. We're going, we will not come back and reconvene Ms. Ross. There'll be no action taken.
That's fine. I didn't need to speak to a couple of you guys, so we will wait.
All right.